This time we'll call the Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty one meeting. Myself and Frank Steinis. Are your county supervisors Larry, I think it's running a little late this morning. So and we have Lisa Smith, our county auditor. We aren't back our engineer. The first item on our agenda today, Chris David Dryer, a Jackson County engineer.
Jack or public.
We traditionally shut it off. Just for the sound purpose.
Here is.
Okay, David.
Morning, morning. Member of permits and agreement with Iowa DOT today. First item is a utility permit for the Coca Valley Electric Cooperative or work in Tedhamore Township. Section six, section six, installing fiber optic service under High Bridge Road, the directional bore. And we recommend approval of that permit.
Both to crew. I would second. And further discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I motion carry.
That'll be a fun bore, I bet.
Yeah.
Entrance permit for Todd Capiceus of Bernard or driveway in Butler Township. Section for a Class C farm entrance on Forty Second Avenue on the west side of the road. Been reviewed by Roger in the field and we recommend. That.
Second, we have a motion, a second to approve the. Farm entrance, ready for Todd Capiceus. Favor. I motion carry.
And we have. Permits for Anthony Rice, not Arthur, as I have in my agenda, which was a mistake. So Anthony Rice at Dubuque Bellevue Township, working Bellevue Township, section thirty. He's looking for two class D field entrances on two hundred sixteenth street on the north side of the road. Those have been reviewed by Roger and we recommend approval.
So moved. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the two entrance permits for our Anthony Rice. All those in favor?
I.
I motion carry.
Finally, we have a revised maintenance agreement from Iowa DOT. They want to, they reviewed the. Their payments for county to maintain. Seven two four lane miles of the caves road that runs through the state park. They want to increase the payment to fifteen ninety six dollars and forty two cents. So that's an increase of about a hundred and forty eight dollars additional per year for that maintenance. So it's better than going the other way.
Okay, so I guess they're paying.
They're paying us.
Good.
For quite a while.
And they reviewed the cost, unit cost per lane mile increase of the revising agreement with us to increase our receipts.
They volunteered to do that and is this normal so many years down or the?
Yeah.
Every couple of years or something?
Yes.
I guess.
One year period.
So you need action on that or?
Yes.
Just need to approve the contract. I would move to approve the contract that presented.
I have a second.
Can we go into discussion?
You're good with it, right Dave?
Yes.
Obviously. A short distance.
I. Won't be foolish for them to pick the blades up as they go through. Just makes.
Cost of more of picking up. I'm not sitting on, just checking. Attack or anything. Check and see Larry.
That's all I have for my item.
Okay. It's a little early for visitors and citizens and I don't see anybody else killing on, so. Do you want to go ahead, Lisa?
Sure. Obviously, man is gone, so we'll review the calendar this morning if you want. Looks to me like a Coca River Water Management Authority for water monitoring is today for Larry at four o'clock this afternoon. Again, Larry with the executive board meeting for the watershed management. Looks like there's a seven o'clock meeting tonight. Looks like it may be as tentative for the Jackson County Board of Health. Tomorrow, Wednesday, August eleventh, the ten AM, the ECI zero to five in sixty minutes is the zoom meeting for Jack. Thursday, August twelfth at seven AM, start how, start up with the Bellevue Hometown Pride. This is a meeting for Mike. At ten o'clock is an ISAC legislative and mental health meeting in Urbandale for Larry. And also Jack at ten o'clock, you have an Iowa DHS council meeting. That's by Zoom. At noon is the Hoover watershed IISC project meeting. I thought they were gonna go with the project.
I think they're gonna discuss the project.
Oh, okay. I thought they were coming here.
With the students who with it. No, I think they're gonna discuss. They wanted input on rootfully related projects. I had read it and I sent it actually to Nathan to see him. He maybe has some ideas that he would want brought up, but they're just discussing the projects that they'd like.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right. At four o'clock, there's an LE PC courthouse meeting here at the courthouse in the community room for all.
That's canceled.
That's canceled, canceled.
Okay. Friday, August thirteenth, there is a work session by Zoom for Mike for the, with Buchanan County to discuss our agreement with Buchanan County and Alex Davis and Jackson County. Ten o'clock is a workforce education collaboration follow-up either in Dewitt or by Zoom for Jack. Ten o'clock for Larry is a seventh judicial Department of Corrections meeting. Looks like that's a live meeting in Davenport. And Mike, you have a de-camp meeting by Zoom at noon that day.
Or in person in Clinton.
Oh.
That come yesterday.
They're trying to go back in person too?
I believe so, yeah. And this came yesterday from Nicole. And it's in person, but it's in Clinton, so not the satellite office.
Yeah.
And seven o'clock on Fri- or eight o'clock on Friday morning, we're having Jackson County Economic Alliance Executive Committee meeting. I am gonna call, talk to Becky after she gets back tomorrow to see if she would sit in on that meeting.
Yeah, right. So that looks like a full day. Then on Monday, next Monday, August sixteenth at ten AM, Jack or Mike, you have a waste authority meeting here at the courthouse. And at three o'clock, Jack has a regional governing board meeting for the Eastern Elemental Health and Disability Services in Davenport. And we're back here next Tuesday with our great smiling faces. So that's all that I have for the calendar. I see that there's also, since I was gone last week, it was put on my agenda that there's discussion of possible action on the Pioneer Cemetery burial forms. It's in discussion with county attorney Davenport that we do not need to approve the forms, but we do need to approve what you agreed upon for the price per lot.
And I believe we decided on three hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was in the minutes. And I would make a motion to approve that as we agreed last week.
Yep.
And I would second the motion. All those in favor?
Right.
I motion carry.
It was also put on my agenda for a discussion of possible action on the nine one one radio object. We don't really know what that means. I know we discussed a lot last week. There's a lot of information and.
Yeah, we just kind of said to make sure it's still on there so that we do at some point either meet when we have a list of wants or needs or what we learn. We learn more and more as we.
As we get more information on how we're gonna spend the cares money, that's one of the things that does follow with them in realms of that, so.
One of the things.
Who's gonna have skin in the game and who's gonna, yeah.
Yeah, who's gonna contribute what I think is kind of the question.
And I think the way I spoke to a couple of the, like Brad and Linda and them and Brent a little bit and, you know, they'd like to go and present to other city councils with police forces. So we know where we're going with this. So we're going first with the law enforcement, of course, in the county and then also with law enforcement in the East Municipality that has it then. Is it fire? Is it rescue? Is it EMS all at the same time? You know, what do we do? It's available that it's gonna come, so I guess we just make a decision at some point.
And so are we gonna also talk to the hospital about it?
I have that on my list now. I don't know who approaches that or how that comes about. Yeah, I would, I would say so. I mean.
I would think we should, you know, make an appointment to talk with the hospital board and get the sheriff's department and the police department and somebody from our board to go and just sit there and say, you know.
Being honest, you'll have to, you'll, I think, Jack, you'll have to have somebody like Bob or Brad or one of them that's been on this board years and years ago and know how that went. Because as I understand it, they used to even take the telephone bill and circle them and see whose number was whose.
They did. They did. Oh, wow.
Yeah. And who did it, you know? It was like my office manager when I made a personal phone calls, you took it off my chat.
Yeah. But I think we, we, I guess we need to have an understanding because way back when I was for you, became nine one one coordinator, we talked about it every time when we got that communications bill. Why, why were we not getting any revenue from the hospital?
And they're using dispatch as much.
Well, they're gonna need to get new radios also, am I correct? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I thought everybody is, everybody's gonna need something new, so.
I think it's good discussion. It's certainly something that has to be done and it's safety issue for the whole county. So we'll see how that works out with, with further discussion. I somehow I feel when we get to ISAC, there's gotta be a proposal made that, you know what? I call a number and see if this works, if this is, this is eligible for this, you know, and somebody says yeah or nay, you know, before the fact when Rob Sand says, well, do it and keep track and keep records and document. Well, yeah, that's okay. You can do it. And, and if they don't get paid for it, we gotta pay it back. Well, that's a little too late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna have to pay a dime back.
No, I mean, we certainly, we certainly want to use it for good, stable projects that saves us in the long run, you know?
Yeah, we, we wanna make the right decisions.
Yeah.
And I do have a lot of reading ahead of me and I'll take it all with me when I go.
It'll, it'll be interesting.
Yeah. You know, and the other thing I had when Lynn Meetinger walked out last Tuesday, I said to him, please email me the presentation. I thought that there was a lot of good information there. I thought that we needed to maybe be able to go back and to, to review it, you know? So I do have that. He did email it to me and I do have that.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I think like him and Bob and Brad, I don't know, if, if the person from Motorola was in on putting it together, but I know. I, you know, we had the presentation from Motorola and he asked me about it. I said, you know what? You guys get your heads together, get a pretty presentation available and bring it to all three, three R to the board and, and we'll discuss it, you know? That's just what we can do, so.
You might give us copies of that.
I will do that. Yeah, I can.
I tried to take notes, but.
Yeah, and, and I knew.
Is it just a link?
He sent me all of the PowerPoint presentations and such as.
But is anybody in an email?
In an email.
Yeah, so you can click on the link.
I'll just forward it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just forward it to you, see you each other. But yeah, I thought that was pretty critical with all of the information and trying to absorb all of that, not that I have.
And yesterday he had called him and, and I emailed back the, what the greater Dubuque and, and that Nick had been working on with. And there was like thirty five pages there. It took a while, but there was a lot of PowerPoints in there or points in there of interest that where you could like leaf off of this. So what is covered, you know, it's, it's. I guess there's a lot of reading ahead of us. A lot of questions.
Well, I printed out thirty seven page report and a seven page report. And then all had to do with just the interim report, so I will be looking at that and reading that in my downtime.
So can you put on the first page in discussion?
I actually think this report's gonna be easy, is what I'm hoping.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, so I think other than that, there's no other board business. If there is, I guess, let me know. Then I will do my portion of today's meeting, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August third, twenty twenty one word proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Both to approve. Second. All those in favor?
I.
Motion needed to renew. Motion needed to review, to renew a Class C native wine permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales to the Tabor Family Winery at thirty five seventy sixty seventh Street Baldwin, effective August seventh, twenty twenty one through August sixth, twenty twenty two.
So moved second. All those in favor?
I, I motion carry.
I included in your packet today, this printout. As you'll see, this is because I need a motion needed to approve and authorize the publication of the fiscal year twenty twenty one Jackson County Annual Financial Report in the county's official newspapers.
So moved second. All those in favor?
Right.
I motion carry.
This is the official reports.
Official report and that's all that I have to report today.
Have heard anything from the auditor yet? I.
I know that they are scheduled to come next week. Our audit has been completed. And we did get the bill for it. Well, hi, I thought. And I received.
Well, they're working from home.
Yeah, not really safe, just let me tell you.
I was curious to see if that would sit since you're not traveling and spending time in motels and all of that, but.
It was pricey.
So do you question it all with who or anybody?
I don't know. I mean, they put down how many hours they spent on the audit. It wasn't like we had any additional auditing that needed to be done. Some.
So do they always put down the hours? Like years past?
I'm assuming so, probably.
Hourly rate.
We could go back and look and see how many hours they put in this audit versus other audits, you know? But there has to be a way of, of billing us, so they must keep track of their hours, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, for no travel, no per diem, no mileage hotel.
Yeah.
I didn't see a reduction. How's that?
Yeah. I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, and this, I think this would be a good time to discuss this too. Lisa and I went down yesterday to the office space and met with Christina about how to revamp that office so that we can have an easier workflow. And Lisa was gonna talk to Marty about removing a couple of things and then Christina was gonna put sticky notes on things that she didn't think she needed in there. And where we'll put them, I'm not sure, but we'll find a space to, so that we can get that coordinated before next Monday.
Yeah.
When our new person starts.
So does, did Elizabeth have any input on it or just that's, here you go, here you go?
We did, we did question that.
Yeah, we talked about that, about how she might want her desk and we decided that we will clean it out that, that we don't need, get rid of the drafting table, cuz Christina says it's something she never has, never has a need for. She doesn't have anything that comes in that big. And so we wanna just get that out of there and, and if your wife would like a.
We got a little Christmas.
We have a form thing that's black and silver that you could, you can put in the corner of your living room by your fireplace.
Is there?
Maybe even be able to put a Christmas tree on it. I don't know.
There were some Christmas tree decorations on it.
Well, anyway, things like that are going to be removed and to try and clean the.
Yeah, I agree, so. So they're still gonna be like side by side back.
We're not sure how they're gonna be.
Facing the door?
Yeah.
Well, that's what the goal is. Yeah, so and Frankie the Fish is officially gone. He took a nice ride.
Okay, I'm okay with that, okay.
I haven't heard from Marty as far as he's planning on coming in today or not.
I haven't either.
Yeah.
Well, should we recess till we find out whether we're gonna see Marty or not?
Yeah.
What's that?
I was gonna say that at this time we'll reconvene the meeting and we're joined by Marty.
Morning, morning.
Morning.
Morning. So we can put the pot machine just right on the skin over it and hold it on.
I just gonna put on a two wheel cart and cart over. It is. Yeah. I think, let's put this way, I think I don't for sure quite how heavy it is. I went over just now and tried to move it and it moves, but I think I can do it. But I was getting back up in case it's really heavy.
Okay.
I'm done with the jail. Whatever you wanna call this, bit guard door like that. I'm gonna hire Joel Woods to go, I got about three valves in the, over there that are leaking. And I can't shut the main valve off to replace the valve that I need to shut off. So he's gonna replace, there's one on each side of the meager. I moved the handle, but it does not shut off. And then the other one doesn't even have a handle on it. So I'm gonna have him do that because it's really big stuff and I'm not equipped to do that.
And in a timely manner?
What's that?
He's able to do that in a timely manner?
Yeah, he thought by the end of the week. I got the valves done, two in this office and one in the treasurer's office. He did that day before, yes. Or I guess it was last Friday he did it.
And they're functioning properly?
Seemed to be, I haven't had any complaints on it.
David said it was cool, not as cool in his, in, in his office, the air, but it was much improved.
Would you say that again, again, here?
David said the air coming out of the, the cooler wasn't as cool as the one in his room.
Okay.
But it was still.
There may be a possibility that we might have to bleed it a little bit because of taking it all apart.
Is there an issue in the county attorney's office?
Hers, we're going to get like we did the, the remote thermostat.
Thermostat, okay.
These new units, the thermostat is right down on the bottom and when it's in a small, it just keeps circulating. Then you gotta go down and hold the thermostat with your thumbs to get it to come on. So what we've been doing is putting a wireless thermostat out on the wall that it seems to work with. That's what we're gonna do with hers.
And you can just blow on it to warm it up, Dave.
I beep my mouth shut on that one. But anyway, um. Let's see.
Early?
I, I haven't got there yet, but I am gonna work on her. She, I'm gonna do this here, move the pot machine, then go to her. They tore the jail up again, so I had to go pack some walls and stuff over there. Some gal pulled holes in the wall. So we're fixing that while we're over there and the, the stool in the office there doesn't, does not flush right. And I've been trying to fix that. So now I decided I'm, we bought a new toilet for it and I'm gonna put a whole new thing on it to get it flush right. I don't know if the, the stool itself is lined up and it won't, the water don't come down right. But in, they have to flush it twice every time to get the stuff to go down. So I bought a new stool for that and I'm gonna, I got that like yesterday. The light on the back of the pin rosanex blinks. The cops got called a couple of times. They thought it was a, some kind of alarm. So I ordered a new light for that this morning. We'll get that on there.
Trees.
Pardon me?
Trees.
I looked at and took a picture of them.
I see.
It's on my list to do.
And not to, not to burden you, but did you see the email from the senior center? They had some issues down there too.
Um, the toilet, no hot water and the toilet seat, yeah. Don't ask me why, but somebody shut the valve off the hot water in the furniture. That's what that was and the toilet seat was just popped up. You just push it down and the caps hold it in place.
Maybe that was an I three A that couldn't wanna heat the water when it was not being occupied.
I couldn't tell you that.
So they just went back in lately and they didn't have any hot water or all of a sudden from yesterday to today, they didn't have any hot.
Well, this has been, she put, sent that out a couple of days ago.
Gonna say last.
I think she sent it out on Friday and I went down yesterday and took care of it.
We're gonna take.
She said it was just in the women's, but then I went to check the men's and there was no hot water in there either. Well, then I figured something. So I went through there, of course, you know, there's four hundred valves in there and finally I found the one that somebody turned it off. I, I don't know why. Everything else was alright.
Okay, have they started the sidewalk out at the care facility?
No. I, I will get ahold of him. I talked to him with a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago. He said it's on his list.
I think the time that he did the concrete out here on the west side of the courthouse is when we kinda asked.
I was thinking he said September or something.
Yeah, I told him I didn't think there was a real big hurry, but we want it done, so it's time to cure it before winter comes. And he said he definitely do that. I will touch base with him again.
Kinda tough today for on concrete, but.
It would drive with one.
Yeah.
The other thing, uh, the parking lot.
I haven't got there yet either.
Are we gonna, are you checking with somebody to come and give you a bid on that?
Yes, uh, the thing that I, that I are gonna do the the care facility.
Love to. Two or three to.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
So we could get a work footage or something.
We just need to get that done.
Okay. And you never say that, they galed on it, Operation New View, wants a parking spot down there.
Well, we talked about that.
Yeah.
You're talking about.
Renell Clark?
Yeah.
Well, we talked about that. I thought that we had agreed.
Well, the thing of it is, after I talked about that, if we don't put concrete in there, then all we're gonna do is blade gravel when we push snow. Then we're gonna have to clean that out. And I don't think, you know, for a couple, three hundred dollars, I didn't get her submit parking spot and I think it might be worth.
Francis Smith.
Well, they want more parking spots, what she, her space, what she told me.
And she's the first one there, she ought to get a.
Well, I would say, you know, that.
Well, I don't understand, why the truck is parked right in the middle? The, there's a van truck, been there, ain't moved for two months.
Yeah, maybe we should mention that before.
But you know, when you, when you go to the fair, there's always three rows of cars in that parking lot. There's two in the front and then there's one up along the building and so.
And then if you go around back, they park back there.
Sure, I know they do. I, I can't imagine what, what.
I guess I haven't driven down there during the daytime to see how congested it is.
It isn't.
Well, I talked, we, we talked about that in Iowa Works because that's where the, that's the satellite for Jackson County is out there and we haven't had any, that's one of the things we talked about last week. We haven't gotten any reports from any of the satellites to see if they're being utilized, if it's worth their while, if they need to have it more than once a week, uh, one morning a week, you know, there's all kinds of things that they're supposed to have for our next meeting to let us know how it is being utilized, cuz if it's not, they'll probably pull it. If it is being utilized, if they need more time.
Well, I guess my question is, Marty, is where would we put the concrete at? Like back around the building?
Well, she indicated she wants it on the east, is the west end of the building.
As there's nothing there now?
Right.
I would certainly think, and I have been down to look, but I would certainly think we'd add on to what we have, if that's possible, rather than putting another slab isolated that you're gonna push gravel on that slab and.
So I think it's gonna go hook to the Smith so they can pull around and come into the end of the building this way, as the way.
That's where the mulberry tree is.
Right.
So you're talking about taking the mulberry tree out and putting in, that would be probably three parking spots there.
Right.
Right, it's more than a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, I.
Well. I don't know. It just depends, you know, if, if we order, you hire somebody for it.
Well, concrete's gonna cost you a hundred and forty bucks a yard, so that's.
Isn't that much? I heard a hundred and twenty, but.
Then you ain't gonna get it for that.
Yeah. I don't know. It's just what she wants and I said, we'll, we're checking into it.
Well, I just table it.
Why don't they move the truck around the corner on the?
What, I don't know.
I guess each of us need to, when we're in town, just drive by it and see what kind of parking dilemma they have. Cause I've never gone by there where there's been more than three cars.
Yeah, I haven't seen that either.
I agree with you. And one of them's gonna, and one of them's gonna be the truck that's parked there. The little, the used to be a little white pickup noise parked there, but he hasn't been there.
The last conversation that I had with Renell, she talked about they're gonna be doing some winter weatherization or something. And maybe they've got contractors coming in.
That could be.
Maybe that's what she's concerned about is the.
That I don't know. She's never mentioned that to me.
Yeah, that'd be a temporary situation.
Yeah.
You know, did they ever put the new floor in and start?
Not yet, but they're supposed to. I did check on that.
They're supposed to and they had a year and a half of their clothes and then put it in.
Right. Well, now school starts, so it'll be the big rush to get it in there. You know?
So now they're gonna get it for school start in two weeks, yeah.
Well, someone will start next week.
Yeah.
Kids are.
Grandkids, teachers and stuff are going in next week.
I don't.
Anything else from you?
We talked about you know, me cleaning the courthouse at one time years ago. You know, me cleaning the courthouse at one time years ago, do you think it's necessary or where do you stand on it?
What do you mean by that?
Professionally disinfected, cleaned every nook and corner and.
I, my opinion, I don't think we need. You know, very, a lot of people in your gut has gotten sick. What do you think? I don't know.
I just think we need to conscientiously make a better effort in keeping it clean.
I think that um based on our COVID numbers. That we're gonna see rising, I think we need to go back and be very diligent with our painting. For handles and.
Well, that's why we're open at eight thirty and we close at four.
Right.
So all of the offices have an opportunity, if they need to spray and clean um inside their offices, they have that opportunity.
We need to continue with that to to minimize.
And we told them at the department head meeting that courthouse, they're supposed to be at work at eight and some of people weren't this morning, as I was here at eight. Um and weren't till four thirty, but the offices didn't open, the doors didn't open till eight thirty and blocked at four.
They're using that half hour at the end of the day to wipe down countertops and.
No, but I mean, the half hour prior to eight thirty also is to prepare your your office to.
We don't. It's eight thirty to four thirty, that's our, that's our work week.
That's when you start is eight thirty.
Eight thirty to four thirty is our.
The only, the only ones that are open at eight is.
No.
Oh, she isn't, they always were.
Only the clerk's office is only, is open at eight.
I always thought these guys came in at eight.
No.
Okay.
And next doors.
And next door, they, yeah, they come in. Even though the door isn't unlocked, they're here.
Okay, like when Nancy was here, they weren't open at either clock. I could've sworn they were.
Okay, anything else from Marty?
I finally got my diesel truck back, the one I really liked. And he showed me how to regenerate it because we don't drive it enough. So he showed me how I could do that, so I don't have to take it back to do that.
That's with any diesel, all you do is hit the button and.
Yeah, well, I never knew that.
Actually, I think if you pull the fire down, it says exactly how to do it up there.
Could be, I did, wasn't aware of that, nobody, nobody told me that, but I know.
I mean, any diesel that sits there and idles sometimes or a semi or anything, they, every so often, they just need.
Well, it's gotta be one with the the afterburns, yeah, cuz like my O three, I don't have to do that. Yeah, right, thank you.
So it takes about twenty, it depends on how bad it is, but it takes about twenty minutes and it runs out, does it all by itself, I idle and yeah, it's just.
He gave me a playbook to, so I can do it, okay.
So now you can go play with it.
Well, I just got it back yesterday, so I'm I'm hoping it's good for a couple days.
Amen.
Yeah, um other than that, I think, I can't think of anything we got going on. Bjork got the lock hooked up on the door over there, uh I think it went pretty smoothly. The buttons for the gals to unlock door are all there.
At the sheriff's office, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brett did mention the fact that he'd like the alley that goes past the sheriff's office. To go straight through so he can go into the pin rose annex instead of having to go like this. He liked that driveway there, I said, you bring that up, you get that okay.
So why, why would we do that when they're gonna move?
I'm just telling you what he told me yesterday.
Well, I.
I told you that, didn't I?
Yeah, I would be very concerned with that because we know that McOkega police officers come down the alley.
At at fifteen, twenty mile an hour.
Yeah.
They go fast.
Yeah.
That's probably not gonna be on your work list.
Okay. I figured that, but I wanted to bring it up cuz I told him to come and talk to you.
Well, the city owns part of that, go to them anyway.
Yeah, wow, no, I, well, that might be true too. Yeah, I think we only own three feet of it.
I remember I had, when we were snowplowing, I think that come into play.
Well, it came into play when we were trying to decide whether we could put the the jail at that location and enlarge it, and they said they weren't giving up. They were not giving up their alley, it was theirs and they were keeping it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would be concerned to do that.
Yeah. So anyway, when Joel comes to do the valves and I'm gonna spend a couple days in there changing. The valves to the stools because they're all leaking in there big time and I can't fix them until he gets that water. So I can shut it off, all right? All right. Good week. By the way, I won't be here Friday, I gotta go get an MRI out here at the hospital. Something ain't working right up here, all right? Don't be laughing.
They finally figured it out.
I hope they do. See ya.
Okay, after looking at last week's paper. And it said that Kurt Coleman said they might be demolishing the old hospital. I don't know what their timeframe is, um I don't know, I don't remember that it said, but. You know, maybe we need to make another trip to the hospital to see what we have. Obviously, we're gonna have to rent someplace to put it. But um.
Yeah, we don't have.
We don't have any.
We don't have enough empty space.
In our, our, our metal buildings not built down at the new site.
Right, yeah.
But if there are things that are gonna. What?
I think we could fill that room pretty fast with the with.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there, but.
Yeah.
I don't see it being much bigger than this office.
You mean at the care facility?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I doubt it, it's just.
The only thing, the only place that we would have in the courthouse, which is not a good idea, would be our community room downstairs.
Oh, we can't keep it there for now, a year.
No, see, that's what I'm saying, it's the only place.
No, we need to find out what's there that we.
We need to find out what we do want because what we do not want. Together we build might want.
Yeah.
So we need to go through first and pick out if there's desks, if there's chairs, stuff that we wanna utilize in the jail. We, I mean.
Well, if that's the case.
Hospital said we have first dibs, so.
So is that a work session thing, you mean, that we all go through or is it a two or three or is it what?
Well, I think.
Start with Brent and get him.
I think it needs to be a work session where the three of us go with Brent and Lisa. And 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 just go through the hospital.
Somebody from the hospital. Board.
Yeah, we'll have to have somebody unlock the doors and go with us like they did before.
I would like somebody from the board, actually, probably maybe, don't you think? Yeah, I don't, I don't care. Brent, start with the floor plan and put numbers on these rooms and then we'll just take little post-it stickers or whatever. And as we find the desk and stuff, we think we'll go in that room, we'll stick it on that furniture as we walk through the place.
If we just look at what's there and decide if we want it.
Well, they said, they've looked at it, they really want it, a nice desk and stuff, but that way you know you're.
We need to know how many desks, you know.
Yeah.
Do we need, do we need five or do we need ten? Do we need twenty chairs or do we need fifty? That's really, I think we need to kinda.
That's what we need to decide.
We only need to dial down, what, how many do we need of what?
So somebody wants to work up a work session time, this week is not good.
No, this week and next week will be in the morning.
No, I'm not gonna say. Yeah, it should be next week.
I I only have time late next week. Then the following week, we're here Monday, we leave Tuesday, or at least I'm gonna leave Tuesday. Um now we're into the la- and I, we're in the the last week of August.
Well, I don't think it's gonna be demolished anytime soon.
No, but I just wanted to put it on our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Radar is, if they do tear it down, cuz I know one of the, one of the parties that was looking at it. He's very interested in it, but they didn't wanna have to do the the destruction.
You know, that last week, one of us, first week in September, we could maybe try and shoot for something in that area.
And that's almost too far away to. Say, yeah, I'm available.
Well.
You know, I mean, it looks good for me now.
I would have next Friday, the twentieth. And I would have Monday, the.
Well, I'd say let's wait till after I said.
Okay.
Do it, maybe the.
Maybe the.
First part of September.
On the thirty first, since you have a board meeting that day, maybe we can do it that afternoon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We're over here and. Did you have, you have brown bag anymore or do?
They don't, they haven't started it back up yet.
Oh, I mean, a couple hours, I don't know what it takes, I haven't walked through the whole thing, I guess, and I don't know what's in there, I'd like to see it though.
Well, this is your.
Tentatively put it on the.
I would say everybody tentatively put it on the, in the calendars and we'll see if we can get that coordinated with the.
Okay, anything else from anybody, any committee meetings or position meetings?
They're supposed to start the trial yesterday, I heard from Terrence, but I didn't, not get out there to see if it started.
Well, I was happy to read, I've been so worried all summer, or the last couple month about. How much water has left that? That's how they want it, so good.
Well, Nathan talked about that day where we shoveled dirt, you probably, we were standing over talking to somebody else and I wondered too. I'm going, what about the, he says, you you, in marshes like that, you have to drain them down.
Yeah.
Not wanted critters and and start over.
Oh.
Not really start over, but get rid of.
Oh.
And the, and the. The greenery that comes up, some of it's good, some of it's not good and.
He says that most marshes will not survive if you don't do this.
Really?
Yeah.
Will they dig out then by the the water outlet or whatever, you know, they're at that tube, will they dig that out, the mud and?
They dug a channel out to drain a little bit lower.
I saw that.
Well, he took a board off a while back.
Yeah.
And. But that's been dished out now, that drains to the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I don't think I have.
I guess a motion to adjourn will be in order then.
So moved.
Almost been moved in seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.